Work session, and we have to begin with a pledge allegiance with the flag. Everyone, please stand.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Silence. All right, and we are required to have public comment, and so there's not a sign up. But if I have anyone that has any public comment, this is a work session, but you're absolutely free to have a comment if you'd like, anyone. All right, if there's no public comment, then we will begin. And I think we'll begin first with a report from Dr. Boyd, if that's all right with the rest of the board, because this is now, let me mention a couple of things. This is really informal, okay? So there's not going to be any of this, there's no motions involved, obviously, we all know that. And the only thing that I would say is if it kind of all of a sudden, I don't think this is going to happen, but if one person began to speak for 10 minutes, I'd probably say, okay, let's try to limit it a little bit. So except for something like that, this is going to be just free, asking questions back and forth, okay? And we'll begin with Dr. Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what I want to do first is provide you guys an update of the, make sure I got enough. Yes, there we go. All right, get myself together. So again, if we take a look at the budget presentation, I figured that would be a good way to structure how we move forward. There are a couple of things that I think are new and timely that we can discuss this evening. But again, as I said before, I was kind of hoping that we would have a Caltool from the Senate, Caltool from the House, and start to be able to put together some numbers as far as what those budgets may be looking like. Unfortunately, that's not the case, and anyone that's done a school budget before knows that we're just kind of at the mercy of whichever the way the wind blows from that direction. So taking a look at the presentation, again, there is just a couple new additions that I want to bring to your attention. And I did add a slide at the very end that I'm going to continue to update. It's titled Updates, which I think will kind of help us move in a more orderly direction. But if you take a look at, let's do the second one first. The second one's a little easier to consume. It's the Communication and Out of the School Division following King George County's Communication System upgrade. So if you remember last time, we talked about this briefly. This was a CIP project. I'm looking at the very end, I'm sorry.
Okay.
It's Updates.
All right.
Yeah.
Age 10.
Yes, I'm sorry.
All right.
So just real quickly, if you remember last time, I think it was in 2022, the Sheriff's Department was approved, I think, $11 million radio upgrade plan through the capital improvement project. So part of that project was to upgrade the radios on the school buses. We've just recently found out, oh, I'd say it was about a month, a month and a half ago, that there was not enough money in the project to complete the bus, the number of buses that needed to have radios in. So we're short 28 radios. Surprisingly, based on what type of radios these are, these are these 700 megahertz radios that will travel throughout the county. The cost of that, if you remember, was $146,785. We were able to speak with the folks at VDOE, and we are able to use ESER funds to purchase the radios and complete that project. So that'll take $146,000 out of this operating request. Again, what we're talking about right now is we're working off of the governor's recommended budget. So if you remember, the amount of money that we were asking for from the locality based on the governor's budget was 990? I think it was 990, 960, $960,000. So again, with some, with a little work from my staff and reaching out to VDOE, we were able to now drop that amount by $146,000. So that's, that's good. That's moving in the right direction as far as what we've been able to hear about the desire of the county and the direction they need, need the budget to go in. Any questions about that before?
Yes, for ESER funds, man, that's COVID related still, right?
Yes.
So how much do we have left, and how much time do we have to use it?
We have until September 30th. I want to, don't quote me on this, but I'm pretty sure it's around a little less than a million dollars left that we have. Now, a lot of that's earmarked and tied to certain things. We continue to reach out to them and see what we can do to satisfy things that we have in our existing budget requests. And we're doing a pretty good job of it, I think, as far as trying to satisfy some things in our budget requests. This $146,000 was a large one. We were unsure as to whether or not we could get satisfied, but we did receive notification the other day that they would approve that expense.
Did I miss, how much is left? I'm sorry, you said it.
It's a little less than a million, I think.
After this $146,000?
I believe so, yes.
Wow.
And like I said, that's what the balance is right now, but there are certain things tied to it that we're working. Um, a good, a good portion of it, yeah, most of it.
No, yes.
There you go.
What would be able to use these funds?
You need it.
For the cell phones?
Whatever we spend the funds on, it has to be expended by September 30th. That's drop dead date. And if we, if we, it depends on what we decide to do with cell phones, but once we decide something specifically, then we would reach out to VDOE and see if that was an approved expense.
You know, if any other divisions, what they've used, not just the cell phones, kind of what they're using these extra ESER funds for, have you heard from the superintendent?
Oh, yeah, all kinds of things.
Everything, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, I, to tell you the truth, I've heard stories of school divisions building stadiums and calling them out.
Let me go in the opposite direction, make it easy. Have you noticed anything that they absolutely do not approve with ESER funds? What categories?
Um, any categories that are not approved? I don't know if there's any specific category.
CIP, CIP stuff?
There are certain CIP things that would be approved. The, the way it started was it was very specified.
Right.
And it was, it was air mitigation strategies, it was learning recovery materials and things of that nature. As we're getting closer to that September 30th date, they're encouraging school divisions to really use these funds as effectively as they possibly can, knowing that over the last couple of years, what these funds have done in some respects, or not yet, but what they will do is create a funding cliff. There's school divisions all across the state that have gotten used to using these funds. So we've done a very good job in our school division, I think, Dr. Benson, and we've continued with this strategy of really not tying them, tying this money to recurring costs. Tie it to recurring costs, then you certainly will have a budget cliff. We've done a pretty good job of using it for one-time expenses and not, you know, not allowing it to be something that we get used to having in the long term.
It is something, I agree with you, Mr. Frank, it'd be something we could discuss during that cellphone workshop, okay?
But also, yeah, CIP is an excellent idea.
That's what I said, yeah, CIPs too, those.
Barely any left.
We can see where it stands right now. We've used, what we did was, we took a look at our budget request early on and took a look at many of the one-time expenses that we're setting in that budget request. We've given, I think I gave you guys a copy of all of those one-time expenses, maybe about a month and a half ago. This was just prior to the Board of Supervisors wanting to discuss one-time expenses. Many of those things we've tried to put into the use of ESER funds, which will lower our request for our operating budget.
Good. And any more questions about the communications equipment and ESER funds?
I just have one about the healthcare.
Yeah, he's going to get to that next, but anyway, before we go on to that, we, no more questions about ESER funds or communication. Okay, go ahead, Dr. Boyd.
Okay, so secondly, you'll see, actually, it's the first bullet there. I'm happy to report that the healthcare renewal came in at much less than what we originally expected it to come in. So I've spoken with Heath from Mark III. If you remember, I think he came here initially and was really predicting, based on claims and usage and things of that nature, that we were going to be somewhere in the ballpark of 28%. And speaking with him and working with him and him working with TLC, I started to predict, as you saw in the budget, maybe it was going to be a 20%. And then, you know, through conversations, TLC did come back and the renewal rate is 11%. Now, our claims are still not in a great place. We're not really a marketable company right now as far as searching for healthcare, based on what was discussed at our last school board meeting. However, I know 11% is still, you know, high comparatively speaking to what we were dealing with last year, but when you initially start talking about numbers like 28%, 11% is certainly much better. So if you, if you look kind of just to shape this argument, I know we'll have a number of questions about.
Before you leave the 11%, let's just quick question.
Yes.
Just, I know we spent 17 grand with Mark III or something like that. Was this a lot of his negotiation to get that down to 11%?
I've really enjoyed working with Mark III. I think they've done a very good job. Having an intermediary, I'm not an expert on healthcare. I can't speak the ins and outs of the healthcare. If you, I think, in my humble judgment, I think Heath from Mark III and the folks from Mark III can do a much better job advocating on our behalf than we.
I guess that's what I'm saying, is this money we spent, the 17,000, if they were part of this getting down to 11%, it's like, boy, this was money well spent. That's my point.
I think there've been, I think our relationship with them has definitely benefited.
All right, sorry to interrupt, go ahead.
So if you remember, in our initial budget request, and if you turn to page eight of the packet, of the handout I just gave you, in our initial budget request, our initial healthcare renewal was, the factor was 20%. That's in that, I guess, third, third row there, health insurance premium increase. So you see the renewal rate at 20% was an estimated cost of $857,525. Everybody tracking me on that?
Yes.
Okay, so what I did below was divide that out into, and we'll go into this in much greater detail, but I just wanted to show you this in reference to the, to the presentation. The renewal rate of only 11% right now, assuming the school board would accept that cost, it drops that 857,000 to 618,557. And then if we consider the renewal rate cost share that we applied last year, it would drop that amount to $466,974. So I certainly have some more information that I'll share with you. If everyone wants to take one of these and pass it around, and then also one of these, hopefully I have enough there. Is there enough?
One more.
One more, there you go. Okay, so the two options I presented for you this evening, and again, this is in reference to healthcare. If you remember, we have this 11% cost now that's in the ballpark of $600,000 that we have to decide how we want to pay for. So we had a lot of discussion about this last year. We talked about the school board picking up the entire 11%. And then we ultimately decided that we were going to use the, the cost breakdown that we already used in the past, as far as the percentage that the employee pays for healthcare and the percentage that the school division pays for healthcare. And so what you're going to see on this larger piece of paper here is, on the far left-hand side, you see current rates. So that's the current healthcare rates in that, in that table on the left-hand side. So for example, so I know we're all looking in the same place. If you look at the Key Advantage 250, that's that first plan, and the employee only, the cost is $655.35 for the school board. Employee pays $115.65, and the total cost of it is $771. Everyone tracking me on that?
Yes.
Okay. If you slide over to the next table, you see Proposed Option Number One with TLC, and this is the board picking up the full increase, the board picking up the full 11%. And you can see the increase there in the, in the cost of the programs, but you'll also see that all of that additional 11% is going into that first column, the school board cost. And the cost to the employee remains the same. And then the second option, if you, and again, there's obviously conversation we can have here, but the two options that I presented to tonight, if you look over, you will see the same cost sharing breakdown that we have used in the past. And this is where the employee covers a certain amount of the increase and the employer covers a certain amount of the increase. And you can see how those rates are shown in the school board cost and the employee cost, and then how the, the total cost increases. It's a lot to consume there. And then if you take a look, the final thing I'll show you is this before I think we can have a conversation. That's the, this piece of paper that I handed out to you. And I tried to put this in perspective of a teacher. So what you'll see in the, in the top, well, first off, let me just read that paragraph. It says, "Below is a breakdown showing our current teacher's gross pay on step 14." So the idea here is that we took the average teacher and their pay, okay? Below is a breakdown of showing the current teacher's gross pay on step 14, less their cost for the Key Advantage 250 comp single. Also, the breakdown of proposed teacher gross pay on a proposed step 15, less the premium cost. So again, if you look at the top table, you'll see a teacher on step 14, their monthly gross is $4,908.50. And the current cost of the healthcare program, Key Advantage 250 for a single is $115, making their, you know, dropping their total gross take home to $4,795. So the next one down is the school board covering the entire 11%. This assumes, again, that the teachers, based on our initial proposal, receive a 1% raise and a step, and then this is the new cost of healthcare. So for an average teacher, if we receive, you know, if the board approves, school board approves the raise that we recommended, and the Board of Supervisors approves the raise we've recommended, and the school board picks up the entire 11% cost of the healthcare increase, the total gross raise, this is gross again, this doesn't take out taxes or anything else, for a teacher next year would be $148.25. If we do the cost sharing method that we've used in the past, the difference, or the total gross raise for that teacher would be $135.50. So you see the difference there of about $13, depending on what we decide to do. And this is, this is monthly. So those are just some examples and something to think about and talk about as far as how we want to cover the costs for healthcare. And I'll stop there for questions, I'm sure there's many.
Dr. Boyd, how, how often in the past has the school board taken full increase?
They've, yeah, they've done it quite a few times in the past. And then they've also, depending on the budget year and how things are looking, they've either usually taken the entire, entire cost, from my understanding, or used that cost sharing method that we used last year.
Can you remind me what that percentage is?
They're different. Yeah, they're different by different.
Oh, okay.
I just calculated that first one, it's 15% is the cost share of the employee, 85% for the school board. And that's, I remember looking at the printout we had last year, there were some that were upwards of 90%. They're all fairly high as far as the school board share, but yeah, some are less than that. So, Dr. Boyd, so I know the high deductible plan, that's, that was new this year. Do you have any information about how popular that was?
It was not very popular. We had a few, and again, I think it's, I think we'll do a better job this year with Mark III. They've already described that they're going to do a better job of educating our employees about the benefits or drawbacks of a high deductible plan. So I think that'll improve everyone's understanding of it, but in our first year, we only had a few folks that signed up for that.
I know, I just did a little bit of research on that. And there's different ways to do it, and sometimes you can just use that as, put it into a savings account, but you can also be a little bit more aggressive, maybe put in some bonds, something that's actually going to make some money or time, and then anything that's left over, once you're retirement age, you can spend on anything with no penalty. So do we offer that with what we have now as far as letting employees invest it versus just putting it in savings?
Invest.
Whatever they put in their agents.
You're talking about an HSA on this, no, we don't let our, they don't invest the HSA right now. I think they're using that specifically for healthcare expenses.
Right, this would be, it's for healthcare, but you can invest it so that you can make some, if you don't use it, you can, you can let it grow.
I think he's talking about the money that they don't use. If they don't use it, where does it go?
I think it's right now, use it or lose it, is that right? Do you recall? Yeah, I'm not sure either. I think, I think for the most part, we're, we get notices that say we're coming, you know, towards the end of the calendar year, use, use what you have in your account? I don't. Well, right now, that, so the high deductible plan, the, the school division covers the entire cost.
Right.
And so you're talking about an HSA, a health savings account attached to the high deductible plan?
Right, so for instance, if, say, an employee was considering the Key Advantage 250 as employee and family, where their cost is $687 a month, right? Or is that a year? That's monthly.
Which one, which one are you looking at?
The first, the top one, left.
Well, Key Advantage 250, employee.
Employee and family. So if they said, you know, we're pretty healthy and, I don't think, well, I'm spending $687 a month, they could elect to do the high deductible plan, which I guess is not free by the time you're employee and family, it's $295. So, but they would be saving about $400 a month, they could elect to put in their HSA and then just, they just use it when something happens. You know, and potentially if they expect they're young and healthy, that maybe they won't use it in long term, it costs them a lot less.
I think the question is, who manages the HSA?
I'm not sure who manages the RHSA. We can, we can have Heath come back and, I mean, if we want to talk about different plans.
Right.
Yeah.
So who manages it right now? Who manages the HSA now?
Aflac.
Aflac, okay, that's what I wanted to know.
So they probably offer different investment options for the.
I'm not sure.
I mean, I was at, no, please apologize, I keep saying past districts, I work so many different places, but I remember one of the districts I was in, the district managed the HSA. And we did offer what, what you're talking about.
We can look into it, and I mean, if that's something that would interest the board, we.
I don't know.
Have Heath come talk about different plans.
Yeah, it might, we don't really have much time related to budget.
And you said that there wasn't a lot on the high deductible.
We didn't have a lot of employees that were interested. Now, he hopes that we can educate our employees a little more and make sure they understand the pros and cons of that plan. In the first year, we didn't have it, I mean, I think it was single digits.
Wow.
Yeah, I think it was very few.
Because it really is a lot of advantages if you're healthy.
Unless you get in a car wreck, right?
Well, of course.
That's, I mean, my family.
But after three or four years, saving, you know, $400 a month, you know, that's $5,000, $6,000 a year. I don't know.
Heads up.
Cancer or something.
But.
Why you have this whole high deductible.
What input have we had so far from teachers? Did we do a survey?
As far as.
Or as what they would like.
They, from what we've gathered, yeah, we have a healthcare survey that we shared, I think you guys received copies of that. As far as the service is concerned, they really enjoy our healthcare plan. I think our healthcare plan is one that doesn't get complaints at all, if that's what you're referring to.
Well, I mean, what I'm saying is, we're sitting here as a board, and we're gonna adopt a plan for teachers and.
None of us on the board are teachers.
I mean, I was there for 25 years, but I never used any of this, because I used the military.
Right.
Well, and honestly, I think at this point, this is the plan that we have to go with. I mean, unless.
Right, we're not, we're not talking about how to pay for it.
Consider a different plan. Well, what we have to consider tonight is how we want to pay for that increase in the plan.
They were sharing, pay all of it, 80% of it, whatever.
Exactly. Yeah, but, but to your question, we don't get very many complaints about our current healthcare plan. TLC is, is one right now that across the state is difficult to compete with. They, they use, they are a very large pool, and it really provides rates that you don't really see from what I've been able to gather from other healthcare providers. And, and the network, the Anthem network is one that has a lot of accessibility in this area as well, is what I hear.
So I guess I was starting to point that out because, I think I just seen opportunity here. I think with, you know, healthcare, I think we all realize that healthcare has gotten really expensive. It's because with insurance, just the way healthcare works in this country, it's pretty inefficient, which not going to solve that tonight, but that's just the reality. And, but I think we can learn from that to try to find ways to be more efficient about the way we do things. I mean, I did the whole presentation back in December 2022, I'm sure no one would like to see that again, but, you know, it was long, it takes a while to explain some of the stuff, but along those lines, okay, yeah, I don't know.
It was a, it was a long presentation, very thorough, very good.
But the, the point was that when you spend your own money, you tend to do it much more carefully and efficiently than when you're spending other people's money. And to a big extent here, when 85% of the cost is being paid for by the division, it's other people's money, so it's not necessarily going to get spent that well. So if we look at that first line that Dr. Boyd referred to earlier, Key Advantage 250, employee only, where the school board's paying 655 and the employee is basically paying 115 for a total cost of $771. Let's say, just for instance, the employee says, hey, you know what, this, this plan's worth about $130 a month to me. I'd pay that, that's, that's all I'd want to pay. But they get it for 115, so it's a good deal, so they sign up for it. You know, but they're thinking, well, if it was any more than 130, then I would just go with the high deductible pay or not do any insurance, you know, which, you can see the 20 bucks a month. So, in that scenario, they're paying 130 bucks, they're paying 115, they're getting something that's worth $130 to them, so they're basically making $15 a month net, and we're, as the school board is paying $655 to give them another $15 of value, so it's, it's pretty wasteful. So I think as you tend to not subsidize things, then you won't have that. So what I prefer to do is take more of that money that's getting thrown at healthcare and hold it back to increased salaries. Then they have the money, they can spend it whatever they want, they can do it, do more golfing, save up for a trip, whatever, car payments, and cut back on that waste. So, you know, with the two options here is either the school board covers the whole thing, or we just stick with the current cost share. So, I mean, there are some benefits to having some cost share, so I just think it would be good to start decreasing that cost share a little bit more and converting it to salary to the employees.
So you're for option two, this last one on the.
No, I would propose a third option.
Oh.
So instead of.
That's the point you were making.
We, last year, we talked about how would we do it? We talked about putting 100% on the employee, not on the school board, 50/50, and, you know, the other way, and we did that cost share. But so I would say for this year, maybe what we would do more is to gradually try to adjust from really high school board cost shares is do, the school board picks up 25% increase and the employee picks up 75%, but then take the entire difference between that and going with option two and put it all towards a higher salary raise, when we get to that part later. So we keep all the money for the employees, we're shifting more from it being a healthcare benefit to just being salary they can spend on anything. That makes sense?
Yeah, but if you think about what amount of money that's going to be, we're talking about, so if, again, if you go back and reference the difference in the 11%, we're talking about somewhere in the ballpark of $400, $600,000 across the division, right? So if I'm following you correctly, you're saying that you want to pick up 25% of that 11%, and then the remaining amount, which will be, let's say, for the sake of argument, $300,000. Stretching $300,000 across 700 employees is not going to be much of a raise at all.
Well, I mean, it's. Well, I mean, it's giving the same amount of money. It would be distributed differently. What we don't have this year that we had last year is kind of showing the total compensation for their employees. So yes, if you look at different employees, like ones who choose healthcare, ones who don't, at the, doing the exact same job, exact same pay band, they make vastly different amounts of money in total compensation. And for instance, the first group of key manage two fifty, so you get a family and employee, or employee and family, school board is paying them about fourteen hundred dollars extra a month for their medical expenses. And then somebody who doesn't have healthcare gets nothing. So that employee fourteen hundred times twelve, I mean, it's a lot of extra money. But so, yeah, it'd be kind of leveling the playing field a little bit. So the, the person who's getting that really concentrated benefit, they're going to get a little bit less, but they're going to be sharing it back with their colleagues who are getting nothing right now.
What in, to look at a big picture of all this, what percentage of our staff does not take the insurance? In other words, they have other insurances, military or dog or whatever.
Right. I think, I think it's somewhere in the ballpark of like fifty percent. I think we have like of our seven hundred.
Fifty.
Fifty percent.
Wow.
Yeah. So I think we are, and again, we're shooting from the hip a little bit, but I think we have seven hundred and twenty some employees and about three hundred and fifty of them, if I remember, I think it was three hundred and forty nine of them use our healthcare, somewhere in that ballpark.
So Mr. Wells, if we did what you were saying, we would be asking fifty percent of our teachers to help get a raise for a hundred percent. Of which the other fifty percent didn't sacrifice anything. They're just getting a raise. Thank you for paying more insurance and now I'm going to get a raise. I, I'm just, am I thinking fairly here? You see what I'm saying? If fifty percent who have insurance are going to be paying more for the insurance and then the county will be, will be paying less. And we're going to take this less amount and maybe look at raising their salaries. The fifty percent who doesn't pay, it's like, wow, they didn't have to sacrifice anything. They get a raise. And the other fifty percent, they had to sacrifice a lot and pay more in insurance.
I would say the ones who aren't getting insurance right now have been sacrificing for years to subsidize everybody else's insurance because that's the money we have for salary. But that's what I'm saying, keep it to, for salary. Don't give it back to the board supervisors necessarily. I mean, to make it work, we'd have to keep it for salary, but.
I, I would add this too, is that teaching is a profession that folks go into because it's safe. And one of the things that makes it a safe profession is always this understanding that healthcare would be provided for myself and my family. If we're working towards something that becomes unaffordable for someone on a teacher's salary, I'm afraid with, as to what that might mean for, for the average employee.
I can say in the seventies, when I worked in Houston Independent School District, um, I didn't pay anything. It was free because I was a teacher. Health insurance was free for the whole family.
So I think what we're doing is taking the people who are single and trying to survive on barely any money, right? Cause probably people who are, have a significant other are relying on their spouses, right? So, um, in fact, we received an email about that today that you probably haven't had a chance to, yet to read, but, um, you know, most teachers can't afford to even live on their own because of how much money they don't make. So I understand what you're saying, but at the same time, if we take, if we increase certain fifty percent of their, um, cost even more, then they might not be able to afford, you know, rent. That's how little money they make already.
What's your recommendation, Dr. Boyd?
Well, I mean, if I were to advocate for employees, it would be to, to cover the eleven percent. I can appreciate the position we're in. Uh, originally we, we were estimating eight hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. Covering the eleven percent drops that to six hundred and some thousand dollars. If we do the cost sharing model, it's four hundred thousand dollars. We, we haven't yet presented this budget to the board of supervisors. We don't know what they're going to come back with. My concern, as we heard teachers speak, some teachers speak this evening, is what I certainly don't want to see happen is when we're in a year where we're talking about a one percent salary increase and eleven percent, which is a high number, healthcare increase, that once all the dust settles, they end up taking home less money than they took home this year.
They're getting a cut in pay.
Potentially.
What incentives are for the teachers who don't take their healthcare? Cause having healthcare is and instead of being a teacher or any job that covers your healthcare, they used to do that measly twenty dollars. And I know that was insulting. But I thought I remember you saying something last meeting that you were trying to see about the ones who don't have the healthcare, taking that cost or something and.
So what we'd like to do in, in the budget proposal, and again, this would be a policy shift because currently we, that, that's policy. That if you don't choose our healthcare plan, then you get a twenty dollar a month payment. Which really, like I said, many of our teachers, it's insulting. So that across our division right now, and I'm trying to go back to the numbers, but I, I believe that was somewhere in the ballpark of sixty three thousand dollars. Sixty three thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars we use right now on those twenty dollar payments. What I'd much rather do is to be able to plug that into a program where we increase our sick leave payout. When we retire right now, there's a sick leave payout program where you can take all of the sick leave that you've saved up and you're paid at twenty five percent of your per diem rate up to a maximum of five thousand dollars. So for the average teacher, they would need fifty sick days to turn into the school division in order to receive that fifty thousand or that fifty five, five thousand dollar payment upon retirement. What we'd like to do is reallocate that twenty dollars a month payment, I'd like to do is and increase that sick leave payout from five thousand dollars, uh, upon retirement to ten thousand dollars upon retirement. What that would do is the average teacher now would have to save up one hundred sick days. And over their career, they're going to get somewhere in the ballpark of three hundred sick days. So we're asking them to save about a third of their sick days over their career and reallocate those funds we're already spending on the twenty dollar a month for an increased sick leave payout. What that does, I think, is that, that benefits children. Because what that, what happens right now is there's a property right many associate with that leave. And once they reach that threshold of five thousand dollars and they're going to get that five thousand dollar leave payout, the other, the other leave that they have becomes worthless. So what they do instead is take days off.
So, yeah.
Right, right. And so that's what we, that's what we do. And that doesn't benefit children because what that does is put a substitute in the classroom. And, and I get it. I mean, strictly from a business relationship where you've got this property right, this leave that you've saved up. And you find out that it becomes worthless at some point. What do you do? You burn it. You use it.
You should have.
You take off every, you use it or lose it. You take off every Monday and Friday. It's like our annual vacation. You use it or lose it. And so that's not benefiting children right now. We have way too many substitutes in classrooms. What we'd like to do is reallocate those funds for what the folks consider to be offensive, the twenty dollar a month and incentivize them to save a hundred, a hundred days of leave to turn in, which in turn keeps our teachers in our classrooms, which I think is a good thing.
We're having a major problem substitutes. And the other day was ninety nine substitutes for one school. I can't remember. It was ridiculous. Barry Allen was looking at it. It was a Friday, last Friday.
Maybe across the division.
It was ninety. Anyway, it was a lot.
It's, it's a lot now.
Going back to the, the employee versus, um, division cost, do you ever hear like, do staff members that don't, you know, is there any kind of grief or grievance when people do have, have insurance versus those who don't? They make more money and all that? No, just, I mean, cause I, I understand both sides of it. Um.
I personally like to see this eleven percent because for us to pay for it is a whole lot less than we originally thought it was going to be. And then also the fact that, boy, I'd sure hate to see we're giving them a one percent pay raise and then we're gonna, they're gonna have to pay more for insurance and so they're getting a cut in pay. Whatever we do as a board, I want to make sure we don't end up in the final analysis as teachers are going to have to be paying more. I don't want to see a cut in pay, whether it's through more insurance or whatever. You know, if, if we're going to require them to pay this, then we need to give them a three percent raise or whatever, not a one percent.
It looks like with the current cost model though, it's, it, it's not a total of one percent of salary more. At least what, from what I'm looking at.
What's.
Last column there that you said with the current, the current, current percentage cost share.
Yes.
Their additional cost isn't significant. Would you agree?
Right. So the difference right now, if it, looking at this paper, the difference in the gross take home, if we shared the cost with the employee versus if we covered the eleven percent.
It's thirteen dollars.
Thirteen dollars per month.
So if we, I mean, if we set a precedence that we're paying a hundred percent of it and then it goes up another, you know, then it's going to be a problem.
Right.
We keep it status quo. And, and maybe next year it goes down and then we can make it a little more even. I don't know, but.
I'm fine with the increase as long as it doesn't end up with the teachers, you're going to actually lose money in the long run. That's all. That was my only point. And if the one percent makes up the difference, you know, more than enough difference where they can still pay the extra in the insurance and they're still not getting a cut in pay, that's okay. I just don't want to see it go below.
I understand. Yeah.
And then also about the one percent is the governor's proposal. If you hear anything more about how likely that is?
Yes. So let me give you this last piece of paper that I have for you this evening. This is the best we've been able to acquire yet when it comes to what's going on with the budgets in the, in the House and the Senate. If you turn to, let me see, to answer your question specifically, right now, K twelve education is on page three. And if you look down at compensation, I think that is one, two, three, four, five, uh, rows down. Is everyone tracking?
Yes.
Okay. So right now that first column is the governor's budget. That was, provides state share of the one percent bonus. So that's the one percent salary increase in FY twenty five. Uh, and then a two percent next year. Currently, the House budget is to provide the state share of a three point three seven five salary increase each year. That's this year and next year. And it requires, and this is an important factor here, it requires the locality to, to match it with at least two percent. That's the House recommendation. So that, that's one that, this, this conversation about compensation is always an interesting one because.
It's only a one point three percent, really.
Yeah. Well, no, no, it's, it's.
Six.
No, it'll be, yeah, that, so it, that's, that two percent is going to be on top of.
Top of the, okay.
Three point.
You're right.
And, and so again, where it gets even more complicated is if you remember how this whole, this funding model in Virginia is way outdated and, and needs some work and they're working on it right now. But when they're recommending these compensation increases from the state level, oftentimes they tie it to a local match, which you see there. The other thing that you have to consider is that they are only funding SOQ positions. So again, the SOQ is the standards of quality. And every school division in the state of Virginia is staffed well above the standards of quality because that again is a document that is outdated. Doesn't have the right staffing structure in it. So what that means is that it oftentimes, and we, we knew this from last year, when they propose these salary increases from the state level and everyone's happy and we're patting each other on the back, they're really, they're really putting that on the back of our, of our local representatives and, and making up that difference. Uh, so we don't know where all of that stands yet. You can see, we, we know exactly where the governor is. Based on this document, we have an idea of where the House is and where the Senate is. The other consideration is it would be fruitless right now to take those numbers, three point three seven five and three for the Senate and take our current budget and just add three percent to it. Because all of those other factors in their budget also changes the state allocation. So all of those things will have, will vary our state allocation from, from, uh, for, for K twelve funding. Excuse me. So all that to say, we really need the calc tools from, from those two budgets as, as soon as we can get them. Yeah.
Like I say, it's surprising that proposing a one percent raise when there's, it's during a time of such high inflation. Did they give a can of rationale for that? And we've had surpluses too. So I'm just kind of surprised to hear that.
That came from the governor's office. I'm not quite sure. Yeah.
Well, and also, and we, we attended that meeting when we had the, the reps or the, um, what do you call it? The politicians that were there that kind of represented the feeling of both the, the House and the Senate and the governor. And they said that the governor's budget is dead on arrival as far as the House and the Senate is concerned. No matter what, we're not, the point is, no matter what, we're not getting the governor's budget.
That's right. Yeah. So, so we probably are looking at something, some kind of comparison.
Exactly.
Uh, between, so, so that's an important thing for us to think about. And again, we can't dig into the numbers yet, but we potentially are looking at some variation between the House and Senate budget, which are both at around three percent right now. And both require some level of local contribution if, if we want to accept that money.
Right now, really, all, all we can do is philosophically look at the budget. We can't make any decisions till we get the calc tool until we find out what the House and the Senate say. But philosophically, we can say, this is the percent, this is what we're going to do with the insurance. This is what we're going to do with this or whatever. So we can talk in those terms.
Exactly.
All right. Just make sure I understand how to read this. So if we look at the Senate finance under compensation, it says provide state share of three percent increase a year, requires division to provide greater than or equal to one point five percent to get the prorated match. Says, I mean, if we so prorated might try to track. And so is that saying the straight up one point five percent adds to get the full three percent from the state or it's, they only match it. So it'd be like one point five plus one point five.
I think it's, I think it's the latter.
Okay.
It gets a matching.
Yeah.
So we can raise it up to three percent to, and then to be a, for a total of a six percent raise would be the most that they would match us for.
Yeah. And so again, what you see, like from a philosophical standpoint, is we're coming off of two years of five percent and seven percent increases.
Right.
If you had to speculate a little bit, the governor is thinking that we're in, we're getting close to the right place for where we need to be as far as compensation. I think if you read into the House budget and the Senate budget, we are, it's still widely known that Virginia is below the national average for teacher salaries.
And that was mentioned.
So, so there's many bills that are being, that are being considered right now that are, that are asking for substantial increases, three percent plus, plus matches, uh, in order for us to rise at or above the national average for teacher salaries. Again, we won't know that like, like Mr. Bush said, we, it's, it's still very much philosophical. I mean, we're, we, we really need those documents in order to make solid.
Right, Ms. Hoover.
I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but I haven't heard anything from Mr. Frank about the, about the insurance and the percentage. And I'm just curious, having been a teacher and I know you didn't use the insurance, but.
And that's why I don't really feel like I'm qualified to, you know, because I did not use it.
I mean.
I would like to see some teachers, uh, what they think of it, you know? But that's just, that's just me, you know?
Have you heard anything about the teachers and the increase of the premium in their health?
Well, of course, I mean, the.
It'd be negative. Yeah.
Yeah, they, they, well, they don't want to pick up, you know, they, they'd like for.
I think it would be a huge positive thing for us to pay for the increase. I think that would be very positive. It would allow us, it would give us leverage. I hate to use that word, but it's true. It would give us leverage in some other areas where they may end up looking like they might lose something. You say, well, you know, we paid for the entire increase. Uh, I just like that philosophically. We don't know and can't really figure, but I do think that even today, we can philosophically go with one of these. That would be my suggestion would be philosophically to go with that we would pay the entire increase.
And, and I think our numbers right now, as far as, we obviously don't know what's going to happen with compensation, but we do have a pretty good idea of how that healthcare is going to cost us.
Right, exactly.
So, yeah, we can, we can make a pretty good decision on, on healthcare and what direction we want to go in there.
Good question. Oh, go ahead.
I was going to clarify that before we're thinking, we might even make a decision tonight, but we actually have until the end of March and we have another meeting, the twenty fifth. So I, I think I would like to put that decision off till the next meeting.
Well, no, I think, no, I'm not saying we absolutely had to make a decision, but it would be nice to get the consensus. What are we thinking right now? I, I agree with you, Mr. Wells. I'm just saying what I am thinking in terms of other things that are going to come up as we have our next meeting about this. When we do have a calc tool and we do have at least somewhat of a budget from the, you know, the governor and the Senate and the House. Is, I think if we began with this idea that we're going to pick up to eleven percent would be those other areas when the teachers may have to sacrifice more would be quite a leverage in a good way. Other thoughts?
For the compensation side of this, if, say this is, gets approved. the House would, would provide 3.4%, the Senate would provide 3%, that's six. And, and we would have to match 2% and 1.5%.
No, it'll be one of the, so.
One of the other.
I say one or the other. Uh, what, what it'll likely end up being is a match.
9% would be great.
It'll be, it'll be somewhere in the middle. Uh, it'll actually, it, it'll probably most likely be somewhere in the middle of the House and the Senate.
Yeah, about 4% probably.
And, and with, with some type of local match for.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So like, it looks like 3%, it would have to be 3% a match, of us matching three, at least 3%.
Possibly, and, and again, that's not the whole story because what they're talking about is that they're going to provide that 3% for the, for the positions they recognize in the SOQ.
SOQs, yeah.
The other part, again, so for example, if, you know, we've got 100 staff members at the high school and, and 75 of them are, are SOQ approved from the state, not only do we have to, the state's gonna provide 3% for those 75 employees. We would have to provide the 3% for the 25 they didn't cover. And then also whatever match it is for the entire 100%. So like a 2% match or whatever that ends up being for the entire 100 employees. So it's a really hard number to, to track down until we have that CAC tool that we can plug numbers into.
And I guess that was my point, is if we could say, you know, we're gonna pay for the total increase in insurance, see how much that is, and then make some kind of arrangements for when we get the, uh, the total amount from the House and the Senate. Um, you know, if we do have to not pay, let's say we can't do the 3%, we can only do two, and then there'll be a matching maybe of one from the Board of Supervisors, okay, that's 3%. Um, you know, people say, well, you know, why can't it be more? Well, again, we paid for, you know, your total increase in your health insurance and even.
But not everybody got that.
Pardon?
But not everybody got that.
Half the employees get that.
50% don't get health insurance, don't listen to my country.
Oh, no, I agree.
Just looking at, I'm, I'm looking at the, the numbers here where Dr. Boyd provided, the renewal rate of 11%, the total cost to the division would be 618, 5, whatever, and then if we go with the current share rate, it would be 466. In a, you know, in a perfect world, yes, but I mean, that's $150,000 difference and we're dealing with a really tight budget. That's just my opinion. You wanted to know, there it is.
Yeah. Well, I do, that's what we're here for.
Yeah, so I think right now, the, our budget looks pretty affordable compared to recent increases, but it's largely because we're only talking about 1% pay increase. So as soon as we get into these House or Senate ones, which are more likely and we have to increase the raise, that's gonna add up quick on our budget. So that's why, yeah, as I said, I think that looking at healthcare, it's inefficient to subsidize. And so I, I'd like to reduce the subsidy and give that more out in salaries, as I said, so at a minimum, I would not wanna pay for the whole thing because it only increases our, our, the subsidies.
Are you thinking like more of a 50/50 sharing? Or 75/25?
I mean, it's, I mean, I just got this, I mean, I could run some numbers to kinda look at the impact of those, yeah, one, one of those perhaps. But I mean, at, at worst, I would say we just keep, we'll keep the cost share we have, but I prefer to kinda level it out a bit and get, give some more to the employees who are not getting healthcare, just so they, they aren't left out.
Are you like a third plan, but at worst, at least option two?
Yeah, no worse than that.
Okay. Others, what do you? Is it possible to have some input from teachers for our next meeting on this before we make the decision?
We certainly can. I just, I'm, I'm trying to picture what that looks, looks like. Do, we have it, we have an, a, a relatively updated survey that we submitted and I can make sure that you can get your fingers on that again, as far as, uh, the quality that they find in our healthcare plan and what they hope to see in our healthcare plan. Uh, we can have folks speak and public comment if you want. I, I tend to believe that if we're talking about whether or not they want the increase or if they don't want the increase, I, I think we can probably all assume the answer there.
Yeah, I mean, I just don't wanna see teachers walk because of this.
Okay, so, so what, what do you, I, I wanna.
What, what are you thinking, Mr. Frank? Some input from teachers, what would they like, I mean, what, you know, what would they prefer? Uh, the, of the 500 something that are, or half that are getting this insurance, what would they prefer? And I mean, we know probably that they're gonna prefer the 11% that we pay at all, but that may not be possible because there's a ton of stuff that still needs to be paid for. But I mean, at least we get their input.
So, so you're asking, I just wanna click, you're asking if.
Now, we'd ask that question, though.
I, well, that's what I'm, I'm trying to nail down. You, you're asking me if the employees that use our healthcare plan right now are okay with the, the school board picking up the 11% or if they're okay with picking up?
Yes.
And I think what you're saying, though, is if they have to pick up the 11, the 11%, what, what they like to see else happen for them in the positive? Right? Like if they have to pay 11% premium, where would you like us, and they're probably gonna say salary, but. So I was gonna put Ms. Higgins on the spot because she does not, right? She does not use insurance, so.
I was gonna put her on the spot earlier too.
Got permission. So if you, as a non, you know, a non drawing from that, right? If, if you would, were to see, and she's 50% of, of the teachers, right? If you were to see the school board pick up all of that and you got 1% salary, like, would that be, how would you feel about that?
As an individual?
Yes.
I really think we have to pay grandly. I made the choice to be on my spouse's. Like, we physically made that hand when we were deciding what was best. That's, that's just me though.
Do you think that that's a common? I mean.
I don't know. As a family, we had a choice.
Right, and some don't.
And we made that choice.
I, I don't know, a teacher, I can just.
Right, thank you.
I remember at recruiting fairs and teachers over the years, you know, interviewing hundreds, probably thousands of teachers over the years, healthcare was a pretty common question. I would say, you know, percentage wise, 60, 70% asked, do you, how much of healthcare, do you cover all of our healthcare? It was huge. Um, and, you know, now, obviously, I was principal of a private school and in those cases, no, we didn't, you know, it was really tough. You say basically, we only covered like a very small percentage and it was really hard. But in the public school, in the last school where I was serving as principal, I believe we covered, um, a significant portion of their healthcare because we were a small school. Um, you know, in terms of the other surrounding districts and, um, having that, um, higher um, healthcare, the, the, the district pay for a higher percentage of healthcare than all the surrounding districts, even though our salary was significantly lower, actually got a lot of teachers to come to us. That did happen. Like, now, now, again, I retired 11, 12 years ago, but that was the situation when I was hiring teachers then, is we got teachers because we paid a higher level of their healthcare um, for those other districts that even though they paid a higher salary. Now, maybe that's because they had health issues, I don't know. But I'm just saying that it was a very real thing and with most of the teachers I interviewed.
I, I, I would agree with that. On a job fair, that's often a question.
Yeah.
On a positive note, we did just save $146,000. So really, it's, instead of 618, it's gonna be 518 or less than that, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we're working towards the right direction as far as, you know.
I would agree to pay the 11%. I would hate the teachers, they've just been through a lot already. And to cover that, and then here they're only getting 1% raise is hard. So now they gotta pay more. So I agree with what you're saying. I just hope that it's a smart, that I'm not missing something, like if something else is important that we're not able to pay because we're taking on that 11%.
I think the value of us paying for the healthcare is more is a significant leverage in, you know, in terms of relating it to salary. In other words, the bang for the buck, the more that we'll do in healthcare actually has, in some ways, more bang than giving them a raise. That, that's my point.
Yeah, when you only give to half the people, then I guess it does more.
That's true. You have a very valid point there, I agree. And that has to be taken into consideration. You're right, Mr. Rolls.
Have you heard anything about that?
About? No, not at all. I, eh, we, you know, it's, it's, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting here trying to jog my memory of, of other benefits that we have that some choose that, you know, elected, you know, benefits that we choose to take and, and others don't choose to take.
Everybody takes retirement, don't they?
There's always a monetary value associated with that and, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here thinking, going back to my previous conversation about sick leave and, and personal leave.
Yeah.
We, we provide that every year. Some use it, some don't use it. Uh, and, and as we were talking about before, some lose it. Um, also, if you wanna tie dollar, you can tie dollars and cents to that and you, you can start to, you know, look up and down the hallways and, and start feeling a particular way about those that are taking every sick day that they possibly have because they see the value in it and, and those that say, I'm gonna come to work and I don't need to take my sick leave. So, I don't know, eh, eh, it's, it's one of those benefits. I, I agree with Mr. Bush. Uh, we're, we're in job, we're in, in fact, in fact, this Saturday, we have our job fair in the division. It is often questioned probably number two. You know, you, you get, but, because, again, this is, this is, you know, education is a unique profession, not like the private industry altogether. Um, you know, many elect to come into this field because they can be on the same schedule as their children. Uh, it's, it's a very much of the mindset that I need to make sure that I, I, I'm doing this because I'm taking care of my family. So healthcare is a huge conversation when it comes to that and.
Can I make one more point? I worked for a school overseas, international school, nice, little totally different deal, but we ended up with mostly public school teachers, okay? And now they were usually with their master's degree. We always, in every international school I was part of, we always paid 100% of their healthcare. They never paid a penny. That was huge because I can tell you that their salary was significantly less in international education, up to 50% less. Um, and, but it meant a tremendous amount, especially going overseas. Oh, you pay 100% of healthcare. Oh, but I'll be making $30,000 less a year. Of course, you got the incentive of being overseas was big too, but I'm just saying that that was a significant factor. Now, we paid 100%, but still, boy, was that a drawing tool for great teachers.
I, as I'm sitting here thinking about it, you know, I think those that don't elect to take our healthcare, as, as Mrs. Higgins said, have the opportunity to take it somewhere else. I mean, couldn't we make the same argument for the healthcare that they're taking somewhere else? That they're probably in the same position in that other industry and that other, I mean, in the same thing occurring there.
They might switch over.
What's that? I mean, so, I mean, some people are fortunate enough to have another option, you know, another healthcare option. We provide this healthcare option and, and they have access to it if, if they choose to take it, but I don't think many of our employees are not choosing healthcare at all. I don't think they choose not to take healthcare. I think they're likely getting it from somewhere else. If they're a young teacher, they may still be on their parents' plan, it may be on their spouse's plan. Um, they're accessing that plan and that plan costs somewhere else. I mean.
Oh, no.
You have data on the people that don't take the healthcare if they are getting it from somewhere else, where? Because I know we have a large military population and that's good healthcare. If I had the option, I would take it.
Yeah.
I'm a teacher, not here, but, um, I do provide the healthcare because my husband's company does the whole for it.
Right.
I had another comment. I know a teacher, Aiden George, who reached out to me about a job. Her two main concerns were the salary and the health.
Yeah, that's it.
I'll tell you that right now, she just reached out to me like three days ago, asking if there were jobs where I work because of this specific thing you guys talked about.
Yeah.
The long-term teacher.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I think this healthcare thing is a big, big thing.
Why, yeah. I'm glad you said Mark III, you probably do some education about the high deductible healthcare plan. That's, that's a good option that we have too. She said nobody doesn't take it, but I mean, if you had uh, more salary, you had the choice to put what you would have put towards, um, other insurance towards that, that's, that is a very good option to consider. But I'm sure not a lot of people like know about it because it's kinda newer.
And you know, thank you, Dr. Boyd, because I, I don't know why, it didn't dawn on me, yeah, it's costing something, so thank you.
Okay, can we move on? I've got some comments about general with this and, you know, we don't wanna be here for hours and hours. I think we're kind of, this is a great conversation. Let's all five of us think about this over the next couple of weeks before we have our next meeting about this. All right, why don't we go through? Um, I know I made some notes, um, especially about this whole first, eh, the first part is more of a summary and I think that's, that's what we should, I mean, if we wanna go into some individual things related to the summary, that's fine. What do you guys think? It's up to you, of us kinda going through these pages? What do you think?
So really, I mean, when you're looking at the budget presentation document, the, the meat of it is gonna be on the budget initiatives. I mean, the beginning stuff talks about the process, but if you guys wanna go through the budget initiative organized kinda by strategic goal.
Right.
That's, um, would be beneficial.
All right, let's start to go through.
So that's kind of on, that begins on page five. It's the second slide on page five. Again, as you're, as you're looking at that, what I'll tell you is that the, the first two there that are, that are bold, those are currently in our budget request. So that $960,000 that we're asking for from, which has now decreased, but that amount that we're asking for from the local government, those two initiatives currently exist in that plan. The next three initiatives, again, those were, those were suggested uh, to, to satisfy or work towards satisfying this goal. They're not in the budget request right now, but again, as, as the uh, Senate and House budgets come in, those other options may, may come into play.
Again, just to make clear, this, that number one on this page five, increase salaries by 1%, the governor's saying, this is SOQ positions, this is the 1% that he would say would increase the salaries. Is it just the SOQ positions, not all of them?
From the state, but what it's gonna cost, so that 1%, so that, that's a good example. So that 1% salary increase that the governor is recommending is gonna end up costing the locality $1,332.
Right. And some of that is because obviously we have at least 25, 30% that are not SOQs.
Correct.
That's some of that anyway, yes. And there's more things than that. All right.
As for the third one, uh, since you have a cost estimate there, I guess you must actually have that worked out what that would look like. I'm, I'm curious what fixing that compression would look like.
Yes, so in most of our salary scales, we have some compression around, not all of them, but most of them are around steps six through 10. So if you go back, this was when we had the economic downturn and there were years where there were no salary increases at all. Uh, and so most of the steps, I'll speak in general terms, in our salary scales have 2% increments up and down the scale. So going from step one to step two and so on. Step six through 10 in most of our scales right now, because of that compression and that downturn in the economy, have been dropped to 0.75%. So what that means is that you have a teacher right now, really in the, the prime time of their career, when they reach year five, year five to 10 is when most teachers are deciding whether or not they wanna stay in the profession. Based on that, and many school divisions are dealing with this and many school divisions are trying to address it. We have, they only have a, they only receive a 0.75 step increase in that year six through 10. So, so there's a lot of compression there.
Right.
That's an expensive endeavor to adjust. If you just adjust step 10, moving it from that 0.75 up to 2%, what it does is it takes every step after that, step 10 through, all the way up to, through step 30, uh, 35, and increases it incrementally by that amount, all the way up to scale. So that, by, by just adjusting steps, step 10 in this budget cycle, and again, if we, Stafford's a few steps ahead of us on this and they've been doing this for a number of years, I think Spatsy's done the same, is if we just step 10 this year and come back next year and then do step nine and so on, step 10 alone is $1.3 million.
This is changing step 10 from 0.75% to 2%?
Correct.
Right. And the complaint that I think all of us heard was that after we gave the raise to those first teachers, uh, 50,000, they were all thankful, but we heard a lot from those teachers that have been here five, 10 years of, what about us? I don't know, I know we heard that and I know we've gotten a few emails, I can't remember if it was before the beginning of the year or not, but we've heard quite a bit about that from the, what about us that have been here five or 10 years, kinda like you were talking about.
So, one of the considerations is depending on how the House and Senate budgets come back and if there is this requirement for, who knows what it's gonna be, 3% and a, and a, and a match, there's a possibility that depending on how it all shakes out, that we can do that, you know, we can. You know, we can adjust that step 10, which would in essence be an increase that would probably qualify, and again, we don't know exactly what it is yet, as that local match. From steps 10 all the way up through step 35 and step zero all the way to step five, we would have already met the 3% threshold. The problem at that point would be just that step six through nine, that we would have to figure something out for. That makes sense? And again, all of this is speculative based on what comes out of the House and Senate budget. But potentially, the reason that's there right now is, of course, we could just, we could just all decide that, okay, based on the House and Senate budget, we're going to give everybody, whatever it is, 3% raise with a match or whatever. We, we could potentially figure out how to adjust some of that compression based on the money we receive from.
I think we need to do something to keep those teachers that are more experienced. You know, we've got to do more with the steps. It sounds like Stafford and Spotsy have already done it. I think we have to do something. So I guess philosophically, again, exactly what? I know you have some suggestions, you've already mentioned one, but I think we've got to do something. Because we're going to start losing experienced teachers if we don't do something. That's.
Okay.
One, one board member's philosophical approach.
Why, but another question, why are we, why are we limiting ourselves to 900,000? As far as what we're asking for the county? Or what, say 960 is what?
960.
960 is what it is. Why are, I mean, last year, we cut this thing down to almost nothing. We were bare bones. Now this year, it seems like we're even better than we were last year.
Well, a couple of things have happened. It's, it's, there is an increase in funding.
Seven million.
Yeah, it's, and so again.
Yeah.
First, let me say, it's, the budget request is one that's considering our county as a whole too. And now, are there more needs in our school division? There's always going to be more needs. There's going to be more, there's more needs right now. The reason it's also $960,000 is because a couple of things worked in our advantage. Number one, the local composite index changed. So we received more state funding from that, which cut down, you know, that increase would have been much more if the LCI didn't change as much.
Right.
ADM changed a little bit, providing a little bit more money. There's, there's a few other factors that have, that have made that request not as high as it's been in the past.
I guess my question is, why don't we want to go to the board and ask for more money?
We could. I mean, we certainly can.
We have to be sure, Dr. Frank, I'm. We just have to be sure that it's connected to the needs. I mean.
And I understand that, but I mean, we had librarians here tonight talking about students in middle school who are reading at third grade level. And you know, I've been, we've been talking about for years, getting reading specialists and behavior specialists in the, in the elementary schools.
And now we're getting some of those with this year's budget.
But we don't have any behavior specialists yet, you know?
Well, and if it's the will of the board to want to ask for more, then there's always more to ask for.
They can always, all they can do is tell us no.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we've done enough. Go ahead.
I can think about relations too, but we're going to ask for more. I can guarantee that because that's based on 1% raise. That's, it's going to be more than that. So that's the biggest factor in our budget is raises.
If we get between the House and the Senate, we're automatically going to be asking for, because I'm, you know, if we get that 3% from the House, we got to get 2% from the school, from the board here. That's, that's a big deal.
It'll go, it'll likely go up with the House and the Senate budgets. Because Mr. Rolls is exactly right, 85% of our operating budget is people.
Oh, absolutely.
So if we raise that salary increase from 1% to 3%, it's going to go up quite a bit.
It will. Can we, can you talk about number five for a minute again? You mentioned it briefly, the $20 for reallocating it. And I love this idea, just, but this does mean you're retaking some of that from the $20 a month. And I think if you, if you couch it, because it's already almost an embarrassment. They'd be like, it's giving a tip of a dime, you know, to a waiter.
So again, it's the $20 a month for employees that do not choose our healthcare is a total of $63,840 in our operating budget right now.
Right.
So really a very nominal amount of money that I like, we've already pointed out, our employees almost consider to be insulting.
Right.
But most certainly a decent amount of money to be able to, to improve our healthcare, our sick leave payout plan.
Exactly, yeah.
We did, we did the numbers and I hope I get, there's so many numbers floating in my head right now. But I think it was $7,200, $7,200 if you got, if you didn't choose our healthcare for 30 years. You got $20 a month, somebody can do the math that they want. I think this is right. $20 a month for 30 years is $7,200. Okay, thank you. So.
You'll get $10,000.
Already, now if you, if you work with us for 30 years and you are able to turn in 100 sick leave days as the average teacher.
Right.
Then you've already improved your position. It's now $10,000 versus $7,200.
It's $3,000 more. Yeah, I think it's a, I think teachers will see that.
Yeah, and again, I think the most important factor there is it keeps our teachers, it provides incentive for our teachers to stay in the class.
I love that idea. Again, it's just me. All right.
How much more do we want to cover?
I'll tell you what, let, I mean, we could go on, let's go on until nine o'clock. And no matter what, we'll call it quits at nine. Sound good? That's another 18 minutes. All right. I've got several, you want to start turning the pages? I've got a few things. We've already covered most of them.
So did you want to go on the second? So here's, here's some things that I think are important. You know, we certainly haven't met with the Board of Supervisors yet. We haven't presented to the Board of Supervisors. There's, as we probably feel about certain societal issues right now, there's rumors floating around about what's going to happen, right? I think what's important to recognize in some of these slides, most certainly the second slide, is that some of these costs are new costs to us that we can't avoid. We can't avoid. For example, the Virginia Literacy Act, it's a great, it's a great plan. It's one that's going to increase literacy, most certainly in our younger, in our younger grades. It's a good plan. Unfortunately, it has a price tag associated with it. It's $182,000 for just the materials that are approved, that the state approves.
Really, these first three, there's no choice of any of them?
Yeah, there's no choice. So again, it's, it's.
We're on page five.
Page, the top, the top slide on page six.
Oh, yeah.
Is what I'm talking about.
That's right.
Yeah, so again, all those slides, they all have the number ones next to them. I don't know why. But it's, it's the second one, which is $182,000 for textbook software and SOL software. And then the next bullet down is, if you remember, part of the Virginia Literacy Act is taking our reading specialists away from students. So, and again, you know, you can have your, everyone can have their opinion on this. They're taking the reading specialist position and transitioning it from direct access to students to a coaching role that's, that's going to end up teaching all teachers how to effectively teach the science of reading. So it's removing them from the classroom and teaching teachers how to teach reading. We need to replace those services that we were providing students in the classroom. And that's going to come through these three new reading interventionist positions that, those three positions are one interventionist at every elementary school. So again, removing that reading specialist, replacing it with a reading interventionist and providing a coaching system for our teachers to become better readers. All of that's in the Virginia Literacy Act. All of that's great information and great, great plan. It has a price tag associated with it that we can't avoid. At top, the top one there is the tuition for the Academy of Technology and Innovation at UMW. So this is the lab school.
Which we've already.
Well, well sought after, well designed plan, came from the governor, came from the Yonkin administration, lab schools across the state. Here we are as a participant of what I think will end up being a very good lab school. But seven seats at the lab school at a cost of $8,500 apiece. You know, this is per people expenditure. That's $59,500 that really, we can't avoid unless we back out of that plan and.
As you said, the first three, we don't have any choice about. But the last one, the professional development, we do. So what, how did you come up with that $88,000?
So what I did was take a look at across, across the entire operating budget, across our entire operating budget from school board expenses for professional development, all the way down to the teacher level and beyond. Conferences, speakers, anywhere in our budget right now. One of, one of our objectives in strategic plan goal two, quality instruction and innovation is growing our teachers, you know, providing professional development. So what you'll see across our entire operating budget is about $88,000 worth of professional development that we receive annually. If you break that, it, it sounds like, I don't know how you feel about it. You might, maybe it doesn't sound like a lot of money.
How different is it from last year? How much?
It's not, it's not much different than last year. Again, that's just in reference of satisfying that goal. That's not $88,000 request on top of last year at all. No, it's not.
Any question? I have a question about the next page, but.
I just have a comment. I think that we don't offer our teachers enough opportunities, but for, you know, so that's just a comment. I think we should offer more professional development.
I had, I think you're right. I had mentioned something that was done in the past, was extremely successful at public and private school. In that we offered teachers the opportunity, and this doesn't really affect budget that much, but it does, it's one of those incentives for teachers, that when you have a professional development day, that if they wanted to, they could take that day off, but then they had to do it during the summer. They would do professional development. Just, it's just, we talked about this a little bit. I'll tell you, that was, that was a pretty big incentive. Because a lot of times you have professional development days on a Friday or a Monday or whatever, and teachers end up sometimes busy anyway. But to allow them the opportunity, but understand, you're still going to have to do professional development, but then they could do it maybe in the summer. And they might choose the three days during the school year and take those days off. But then in the summer, you know, now some professional development is required. I mean, they don't have any choice about, but then some of it are their choices. I'm just saying that allowing teachers to have those choices, it doesn't change much of the budget, but it does give teachers another one of those perks that they might do. Anyway, it's just a thought.
I guess overall, as far as figuring out required staffing or manning for the budget, we had the policy changes past year as far as allowing students to enroll in just one class. Although I think in terms of implementation, we didn't let people enroll until we knew there were spots available. So I don't know if it really gives a true idea of the demand signal for those, but maybe got a little bit of it. Was there any, getting any feedback from where people wanted to take courses, but we couldn't offer them because we didn't have space that we maybe need more?
I haven't heard that we've had a huge number of requests at all. In fact, I think halfway through the year, I think we were at like one or two requests. Now, of course, to your point, class size, particularly at secondary level, is large right now. So there is limited availability, but it's, it's not, I don't even think we've crossed, we haven't even gotten to that bridge yet. We, the, the demand right now, we certainly hope we can increase it. I can tell you, Dr. Wright and I have talked a little bit. Stafford's doing something a little creative right now that we could possibly look into in the future. They're, they're working with Virtual Virginia to offer basically a virtual opportunity for students to take classes. I think there's some benefit there and, and we're going to begin to probably look a little deeper into that, particularly since we have such a high percentage of homeschool students. There, there is even a possibility, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but they do become public school students at that point that are attending, you know, King George County Schools virtually, which I believe would then make them eligible to participate in VHSL activities and other things of that nature, which is often very interesting for many of our homeschool students. So I think, well, we were talking the other day, we may plan to make a visit to Stafford and see how they kick, they're, they're starting it this year. See how they kick that off and see if that's something that could be beneficial to our school division. Because on the surface, it sounds like it may be a win-win for us as a school division and also for our homeschool community.
I thought it would be too, but I've talked to four, five, six homeschool people and they weren't as thrilled about it. I thought they'd be really thrilled about it because in Texas, it was a huge conversation. But here, there, those, those co-ops are so established and they're so involved with athletics and those different co-ops. It's not quite the knee, I thought it would be huge because I mentioned this and it wasn't quite the excited response that I thought it was going to be.
Well, so I talked to parents of kids in school right now and they were like all about, I thought it was great because there are so many things that you can prevent or, you know, avoid. In addition to, we have, you know, potential crowding issues, so, you know.
There's a lot of benefit. I can, I can tell you, you know, and I would be interested to see how Stafford ends up doing it. My dissertation was on the effectiveness of online credit recovery. So for many years now, we have used the online platform to recover credits, to, you know, use it for classes that are hard to offer at the high school. It's, it's not for everyone. It's for, it's for a certain group of kids and it works, you know, kids that have issues with anxiety, things of that nature, it works wonderfully for. But just like we learned through COVID and our virtual, you know, Google meets and things of that nature, it's, it's not for everyone. So I'm interested to see how Stafford may be coming up with a criteria or some, some type of way of determining eligibility for the program. But I, I think it's certainly something that we should look a little deeper into in the future, in the near future.
That's a good point.
Since you're talking about budget, I mean, how would that affect the budget? I mean, is that save money, it costs more money or neutral?
It's tough to say. I can tell you that with, with every added student, as is referenced in the packet there, as our ADM increases, our state share increases. So it's really, it's, it's that relationship between how much a student costs us versus how much money we receive from the state. So in, in some instances, you know, there are certain situations where, where, I don't want to sound, make this sound unsympathetic, but, but there's some instances where certain situations and certain students cost more than the state allotted funds. And then there's some instances where, and maybe this virtual academy or whatever we end up calling it, could be this type of situation where the amount of money we receive from the state is less than the tuition that we would pay for Virtual Virginia.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's, it's, it's in the early stages of kind of developing it and looking at it. But it's, it's, it's interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I wanted to go to something that I really was bothered by.
Paige.
This is, if you want to look, look in this big drawing here, it's generally on page five of 69. Just to kind of look at that, you could go anywhere.
Sorry, what tab?
In the big one, under, this is under. And this is a general statement, Dr. Boyd. And I guess I was looking at the general education teacher salaries.
Yes.
For all, for the three elementary schools, that's all I did. I just saw something that I thought was interesting. I just want to do a little bit of comparison. First of all, with teacher salaries, you know, you had King George Elementary, which you had like a thousand students or something, okay? And this is estimates. Potomac about 550 and Sealeston about 330 or something like that. That's not exact, but it's close. Then when I divided, first of all, I did the teacher salaries and I divided those, ended up that King George, with the greatest number of students, were paying teachers. Now, I know it's numbers of teachers, but we're paying them less than any other of the schools. And yet they're, you know, they're almost double when you compare it to Potomac and we're paying them per student, it's like $1,600 less per student. When, I'm talking about salaries now. When you do the whole general education budget for the three elementary schools, this is what I came up. Now, I'm talking about all of these general education, teacher salaries, cafeteria, paraprofessional stipends, the whole bit, okay? When I looked at the bottom line for those, King George Elementary School, this is the whole general education, okay? When divided, the total of the general education by the number of students, King George Elementary spending $3,340 per student. And with Potomac, we're spending $6,074 per student, almost double, and they have half the students. And then Sealeston, we're spending $5,464. Again, it looks like. Again, it looks like King George Elementary. I don't know what's going on.
So, so it's in relation to salaries?
To, well, to the whole general education.
Probably mostly related to salaries because that's 85% of the.
It is mostly salaries. But I was just, obviously we can't, this is nothing to fix as far as budget. All I'm thinking of, that could be because we have a lot less experienced teachers who go to King George. We know there's so many variables.
Yeah.
It's still, this trend is a little concerning.
Yeah, that's what it is.
Greatest need in terms of elementary, you know, in terms of students and some other needs because of King George Elementary, is where we pay the less per student. Now, this is mostly the money spent on general education, which is mostly salaries. And I am thinking probably a lot of, you know, if you compared the teachers in a number of years, you're going to have more experienced teachers at Potomac and Sealston. It just, this has nothing to do with the budget, but it's a concern that came out.
It's interesting.
Trend.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Anyway, sorry. I thought it was good for the board to see that. It bothered me.
You suggest like the teachers from like Potomac moving to King George.
Well, no. Don't even.
What it is, it's not per kid, it's the teacher.
No, I, it's just something that as we look at the whole division, Dr. Boyd, I, I'm not suggesting we do anything right now.
It's just an interesting factor.
It's an interesting fact that where are we spending our money in reference to the numbers of students and where they're located and socioeconomic situations. And it seems as though we're spending most of our money at Potomac and Sealston and the least amount at King George Elementary, which is the greatest need. That's it. Sorry, that's kind of, sounds kind of negative, but no, um, Ms. Davis, I'm not suggesting that we move teachers from Potomac to King George. No.
Well, I looked at the same thing. I looked at it a little differently. When comparing the amount of dollars that schools are asking for, and I, and I just picked the first three elementary, which, and just for supplies, the one that has the less amount of students is asking for more money than supplies than anybody else.
The same kind of thing.
Yeah. And you know, who, who looks at that? Does anybody look at?
Well, principals.
I know that, but the principals are the ones that are doing this, but I mean, who on?
And this, this to me is, so this is kind of the same conversation we've been having about the stipends, is that over many, 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 many years, and, and for a number of different factors, some of those costs could be because the needs are different. And I don't know, I don't have it in front of me, but for example, the facility of Potomac is not the facility of Sealston. So there could be some different costs there, but nevertheless, over many, many, many years, they have liked the stipends, worked them, worked their way into really what needs to be looked at again.
Well, you know, if you just look at the greeter, the greeter at Potomac gets 28,000, the one in.
I did notice that.
And, uh, King George gets 41,000.
Yeah. And so that's the, that's where they fall on the salary scale.
Yeah, because I, one at King George has been there for a long, long time.
Yeah. Right. And so that's the, that's salary and benefit, and that's basically where they fall on the, on the scale.
Yeah.
Should have just, you know, I just looked at that.
Yeah.
What's in, yeah. Being equitable at the various schools and kind of measuring all those things. And there are so many, and I know even the thing I gave Dr. Boyd, please forgive me. There's so many variables with that. I understand that. But it's still, even when you look at the generalization of that, if it was a few dollars difference, but when you're looking at double, you know, when the need is half, it, there's, there's a concern.
Yeah. Well, and you know, I agree with you. Like, I don't want to say this the wrong way, but that's really what you see across the country. The, the school divisions, the urban school divisions that have the greatest needs are usually the ones that have the most turnover and teaching staff, uh, the ones that have the least amount of resources. Um, so, so.
Even within the districts.
Maybe that's a phenomenon.
And I'm, I don't know how to solve it necessarily, or if it can be solved. But it is something I think that we need to be concerned with.
It is interesting.
And making assignments and so on. I hope I didn't disturb any teachers listening. All right. It's nine o'clock, guys. Um, couple of things. Go ahead. Yes.
I just want, when we go to the Board of Supervisors with us, that we're asking for enough money so that we don't have 32 kids in a math class. Cause there's, there's no way, you know, that Algebra I, a kid is learning Algebra I with 32 kids in there. It's just, it's just really hard to do.
That's nice.
Yeah, currently there's hard, but math is a hard position to staff. I'll leave that conversation aside, but right now in the budget request, we have two additional teaching positions at the, at the high school, one of which could be a math position. There could be more. We, we could put more in there. Um, it, as Mr. Rolls pointed out, I think when the House and Senate budgets comes back, the, the request is going to go up. It's going to go up based on the House and Senate budget. If we as a board believe we want to, like I said, there's need. There, for as many years as we've, and I guess we're all relatively new, but I know I, I said at that diocese for a number of years, requesting additional positions, teaching positions at the high school. Um, we're trying to satisfy some of this, that this year, understanding where we think the county's budget is going to be. If it's the will of the board, there could always be more teaching positions at the high school. I, I'm.
It's a good point, you know, especially in terms of class size with some of those. But you're right, in that those are the hardest positions to fill, math and science, you know, and it's like, we would love to have smaller class sizes, but then we're going to have more teachers. We can't get teachers in those areas. They're very hard to come by. But it's still a problem. You're right, Mr. Frank. Um, all right. It sounds like we're going to be meeting on March the 11th. We're going to talk about cell phones. Is it legal that we can at least maybe see if we need to plan another budget work session before we have to finalize this?
We can, we can add to that agenda for, for the work session and we can put cell phones and, and budget update.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll keep you guys in the loop, uh, as information comes in. And I, I think it'll be a very fluid couple of weeks.
I think, board, if you agree, again, this is just a work session. I think we need to do that because we have to approve this in that last meeting in March. And, uh, we need to have another discussion after we get some of these, the, you know, the Senate and the House and so on, and the COW tool. So would you agree that cell phones and a budget update? Does that sound okay with everybody?
Right. And I, I do think that in terms of broken the budget, the real work really kind of begin, well, I mean, not, Dr. Boyd's obviously already put a lot of work, but, but for us to approve, it's, it's really once we find out the Board of Supervisors, how much we're getting and like, make sure that we're prioritizing with it. That's, that's practically another work session to go through that.
And, and that'll be, that'll be probably in the April timeframe.
Yeah, yeah.
Just remember, we only got three and a half hours and now we're going to add in the budget to it.
Say again?
Three. It, well, okay, yeah, we've only got two and a half hours to talk about phones and now we're, on March the 11th, and now we're going to add in phone suit, I mean, uh, budget to it.
Yeah, I know. Well, we could do another day if you wanted to, Mr. Frank. It's just that I think we've got to have something ready by that last board meeting in March. Well, why don't we talk about it? If we need to schedule, because you're right, the cell phone could end up taking the whole three and a half hours. That's your point.
Point.
Two and a half hours, yeah.
Two and a half, sorry. I did the same mistake. Okay. Um, and we can say, you know what? We're not going to be able to, uh, do a budget update, but we'd have to schedule something else then before the 20, 26th of March.
Or the 26th. With 26th, the school board has to approve the budget that we deliver.
So we'd have to have.
We have a meeting on, on the 25th. So we can talk about that then. And then it has to be the, you.
The next day?
27th is when you're.
Correct. So the 25th is our meeting for March.
The 27th.
That'd be our last opportunity, other than maybe the 26th to approve a budget. The 27th, as of right now, and again, I, the, the, the county, I, I met with, uh, Ms., uh, Mr., I'm getting his name right, Grisavi. He's the, he's the, um, not the county, he's not the acting administrator. That's.
He's the counselor, the one who's.
He's the consultant for, for the, uh, for, for the county right now, as far as, uh, he's, he's working through budget stuff. And, and so I think he's, he's just digging in deeply right now. And so that, that timeline might change a little bit, but, but as I know it, and as I tell you this evening, uh, I, I'm on the calendar for the 27th of, of, uh, this month to deliver our approved budget to the Board of Supervisors. And, and legally, by the end of this month, we have to deliver a, um, approved school board budget to the Board of Supervisors.
So I, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Frank, but we got to do something with the budget. It, let's hope, let's at least do an update. And if we need to have further discussion, we'll have to schedule another meeting.
Schedule another meeting.
When we have our meeting on the 11th, will we have input from the committees at the high school? Okay.
Yeah. And, and so where we are with that right now, we had one work session already. Uh, we, we started off, I gave them, you know, I, I said, you know, I don't want you coming in with, with the answer right now because you don't have enough background information. I gave them our, our, you know, the policy that we removed from the policy manual last year. I gave them current practice, which was an excerpt from every single principal. I gave them the information that is in our code of conduct. Uh, I get, also gave them the articles that we have been reading and, um, right now I've got about 50 responses in the Ask the Superintendent that folks are weighing in on every side of the aisle about cell phones. So all of the committee has that. We started off with a very good activity that in, that, that encouraged a lot of conversation about we, we determined who the stakeholders were, the direct stakeholders in this decision, and the pros and cons that they believe cellphone use in schools provide. The pros, you know, um, communication, whatever those were. And, and I'm going to provide all of this information and feedback to you. The next time we're going to come in, uh, which is actually tomorrow, and we are going to take a look at some policies across the Commonwealth. There's many school divisions right now that have redesigned cellphone policies that have come up with some very innovative ways. I've got pretty good geographic representation, uh, all across the Commonwealth of different policies. We're going to take a look at our current policy and measure it against some of those policies and see, um, I've told them that, that right now our general consensus is that we're, we're looking to be more restrictive than we currently are. So we're going to kind of put those on a continuum where we currently are and, and see whether or not those existing policies are more restrictive. And we're going to just start troubleshooting, uh, possible solutions when it comes to, to policy considerations or practice considerations. And then we're going to loop that all back into that initial list that we had of stakeholders because I've told you guys, I've done this cellphone conversation before. To the best of our ability, I think it's beneficial for us to make sure that we address stakeholder concerns. In, in whatever policy or practice we come up with, which I think we'll end up doing, um, on the tail end of this, we'll deliver all that to the board so that, uh, you have it to make any policy considerations you want to make.
It's a lot of work. Thank you, Dr. Boyd. All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I move you adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, we're adjourned. Thank you.